Welcome, everybody, to the January 3, 2023 regular meeting of the Foxborough School Committee, which we will now call to order. First item of business is always open public comment, which we don't have anybody signed up tonight, but it's always just a convenient place to remind anybody who might be watching or listening that you can submit comments online through the inbox, and those messages do go to admin plus all committee members, or you can also come to the beginning of any meeting for open public comment. So, moving along to our first or second item on the agenda, approval of minutes. We have minutes from November 1, 2022. Do any members have any comments, additions, edits, concerns on those minutes?
I would move to accept the minutes from November 1.
Excellent.
I'd like to second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented? It's 400. I should remind viewers, too, that Ms. Raymond is not here tonight. We knew that she couldn't be here. She had a scheduling conflict, but she's been in communication with the chair and admin about her concerns, so those will be addressed in today's meeting as well. Second set of minutes are from December 13, regular school committee meeting. Any members having any additions, edits, questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December 13, 2022.
Second.
Thank you both. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented? That's 400, and those will be available on the website. Thank you so much for all the work that goes into putting those minutes together. All right, moving on. Superintendent's update, Dr. Berdus.
So, first of all, Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome 2023, looking for a great prosperous year. I only have a handful of updates, actually. One of them is kindergarten registration has opened. So principals have sent out the registration link and information for kindergarten registration. As a reminder, children need to be five on or before August 31 in order to register for kindergarten. And if you have, if you're listening, or you have friends that maybe you don't have a kindergartner, but you know of a kindergartner, please, you know, reach out and share that information with those families as well. The earlier we have registrations in the spring, it makes it so much easier for us from a budgetary standpoint, as well as from a scheduling standpoint. So, anyway, welcome to the kindergarten class coming in, starting registration today. Just a couple of reminders with our, at the Taylor PTO, they have the production of Pirates Past Noon that will be taking place this weekend. The Taylor students will be able to see it on Friday, and then there's a production Friday night, and a couple of productions on Saturday that are open to the public at the Rodman Performing Arts Center. And we have a couple of concerts coming up with our 7th and 8th grade, 8th grade, actually, the Step Up with band and orchestra chorus, actually. Step Up is on next Monday, and then next Thursday is the 7th and 8th grade band, chorus, and orchestra concerts.
Awesome.
And then the last one is, just a reminder, particularly, we think about kindergarten, but we also have those students that will be graduating, and this is a very busy time for our seniors. And I know Mr. Donovan, he sends out a weekly newsletter, there's so much information. They are particularly in the guidance section right now with lots of dates for students that are thinking about post-secondary planning, to make sure to look at the newsletters and all of the information that's there.
Right on. Thank you very much.
That's kind of it for the updates?
Especially for parents going through it for the first time. They should be reading those updates and studying them.
Or parents that are doing it for the last time, like myself.
That's a celebratory, that's a celebratory read. That's excellent. Any, do any members have questions or concerns for Dr. Berdus? Well, thank you so much, Dr. Berdus. Appreciate the updates. Moving along, we're going to continue discussing the budget. Reminder, just globally, this is a multi-stage process. Dr. Berdus, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. So, Mr. Yubna could not be with us this evening, and so, any specific questions, I think I'll be able to answer most of them, but if not, we'll just table those. But just as a reminder, I think it's important for those that might be viewing at home that it is, as you said, a multi-step process. We started off with two separate meetings back in November with the town side and the forecast to look at what that looks like for our planning, and then we had the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and School Committee in December, as well as our policy sub, not our policy, our budget subcommittee back in December as well, and then the first public presentation of the preliminary budget in December, on the 13th, actually. So, we've sent our budget request to the town at this point in time, and then this evening is any questions that you have based on our presentation in December. I know a lot of information was shared with you. I know based on some of your questions that Mr. Yubna has also shared some additional information, but I think that when we look at the highlights of that, it really is continuing our programs that is a high level of education, looking at all of the grant-funded positions and those grants that are sunsetting at the end of this school year, and taking into account those positions that we feel are really important to be able to carry forward in our operating budget. But even with that, we have an overall reduction for staff overall of 6.025, as far as reductions there. That's a 3% increase, as you are aware, on the budget itself, and it is assuming a number of those positions that have been grant-funded, such as social workers, English language learner, teacher, and some special education to continue with our co-teaching model to move forward based on our plan for success.
That's right. May I ask a couple, this is more just regular, just clarifying for folks, and for myself as a helpful reminder of just how much thought goes into putting this together. I know that there's the staff projections are something you have to do every year, that you, that you're very detailed in putting the contract forward, so you're actually getting real costs in terms of how much, you know, what steps and lanes our many faculty members are on. And then, how's the, at what point do you guys have the discussion about, and it's always a shot in the dark, but projecting health insurance rates and increases to benefits and things like that, which are, you know, a cost center as well?
So, we're constantly looking at all of even steps and lanes, you know, that example that you just gave, where our staff are. At this point in time, we have about 64% of our faculty that's on the top step. So, looking at also large numbers if they're at their, at the master's level, because then they can then move on those steps and lanes to master's 15, master's plus 30 credits, et cetera. So, we're looking at those costs, you know, it plays into the overall budget when we think about we are in the first year of a three-year contract, so that's important to consider when we have that scattergram, if you will, that Mr. Yubna has provided to you. And then we look to it all, the rest of our staffing, like our educational assistance in the budget, as you know, we have a number of reductions in order to bring on special educators, to be able to have highly qualified staff working with our inclusive model in order to best meet the needs of our students.
Understood. I appreciate, this is my own thought, I appreciate also that we have been talking about the cost centers in terms of IT licensure and things of that nature. Coming over, it's really lovely to see that factored in, so I want to thank you and your team, and Mr. Yubna in particular, for adding that in, because it's something that people ask about, and it's pretty enlightening to see.
I think, too, when you're talking about how we go line by line, and we do every single individual and where we are, looking at like master's level on the salary schedule to master's 60, et cetera, we're also looking at how, with the curriculum instruction piece, of how our licensing has changed and those increased costs that are there. We need to be really thoughtful about what can go away and what needs to stay when we think about licensing, because it is, I mean, it's very expensive, and it has increased so much. I know we talked about it at the last budget presentation, where we're thinking about textbooks as an example. We still want to have like a hard, a class set of hard copy textbooks in a classroom, but so much of it is digital. So, yes, it makes it nice and light on the backpack for our students and not carrying those around, and they all, with being one-to-one, they have access to all of their textbooks online. We still need to have hard copies of those, but it makes a difference when you project out the cost five years. And then when that cycle comes around, like, for instance, we're in a curriculum review cycle for technology right now, but we're also in it for science. What's the recommendations going to come out of that? What does that look like, and how does that have implications for licensing for the future for software?
Absolutely, absolutely. I appreciate, I appreciate the detail when it comes to that. And in addition, this is picking up a thread that you and Mr. Yubna had talked about in the last meeting, really, the early and multi-level look that the school leaders did and your curriculum leads did in terms of extra staffing and determining which of those positions that had been previously grant-funded should be considered permanent.
And I think to that point, when we think about a social worker as an example, we know how critically important they are to our students in our schools, and then also supporting families at the same time, and that that's been a budget conversation we've had for years. We had one at the high school, we had one at the middle school. For about three years, we asked to have an additional, we moved it up to a .5 at the high school, asking the same thing at the middle school. Then what happened with those ESTR funds, those grant funds, it allowed us to then increase the 1.5 in order, particularly in this time, in what we've been living through in the last number of years, the needs being so high from students, and those needs have not gone away. So, we have, as you said, we sat down with all of our administrators, went line by line, each of these, what is priority in order to be able to consider, continue to support our students, and what do we really need to consider as being critical?
No, and I think, I think that's a discussion that's happening in districts all surrounding us, and it's a very valuable one, not to just assume that priorities change once you see, once you see the impact that staff, especially in mental health and special ed and social work and things of that nature, that they actually have on the community.
And then when you think about the English learners, students that English is not their first language, by having the third L teacher this year and continue, that's based on caseload. So, it's our number of students, they may have achieved proficiency on the access test, which is the state test, like the MCAS, that everyone, they take the MCAS, everyone does, but they also have to take the access test. And they may achieve proficiency, but then by state law, we have to monitor students. It used to be two years after they've achieved proficiency, we have to monitor them for four years. So, you might think that, you know, a number of 67 students that are current active English learner students receiving services, it's actually a much larger number than that, because you have to continue to monitor all of those that have achieved proficiency. And then in the area of special education, it's, again, looking at the teachers that are highly qualified, that can meet the needs of our students in the classroom, co-teaching, but again, you've got students working with a highly qualified certified special education teacher in lieu of having educational assistance. We still need educational assistance, but we're, again, prioritizing where can we have a special educator in different areas with educational assistance. We will still continue, they play, educational assistance play a really important role, and we will continue to need them, but again, it's looking at our special education population, looking at the needs, looking at our scheduling and our inclusive model, and what that looks like and how it plays out in the budget.
Well, the two things that you said, that you hit upon there, that I really just appreciate, one, we've said it before, those shifts in staffing are related directly to the district's strategic, the goals for this year, and so I like to see that, because budgets are moral documents, and this does show our priorities. And two, it's, I think it's fortunate and not the norm necessarily when you're looking at increasing some of these positions, both in special ed, social work, OT specialists and things of that, like where you actually get to field test the position before you decide to fund it fully, right? And then these are things that we've been using through grant funding, and then they demonstrated that, no, this is a need that's going to continue. So, I just, I think that's a nice use of that opportunity and that grant funds to really just envision what future we want for the district going forward.
And we're still down six positions.
Yeah, overall, we're still, we're still netting six, yeah, six fewer. That's right. And I just don't want anyone, like, who is looking at the budgets to think, oh, my gosh, they're bringing down all these people. It's like, we are actually net going down while-
Being really thoughtful about those.
Exactly, exactly. Are there, and I know that the MO for the admin and committee in years past has been, any question that you have, you should be sending along to admin, doesn't need to wait till this meeting, because then they bring the information back. But is there anything that committee members want to bring up or highlight or put on the docket for us to discuss the next time the budget's out in open meeting?
I'm, I feel like the information that we've been given has been very thorough, and it is always very thoughtful, so I'm fully prepared to, when it is time for us to vote, I don't have any questions about where the budget stands and what we're, what we're asking for.
Okay.
I feel very comfortable with the material and the information. It's been explained very well.
Okay. Well, and I also, just since you mentioned this, Dr. Berdus, I want to thank your staff and you for the work, and seeing the revise that we have here and all the extra tabs and things like that, they're all directly related to things that folks were wondering about, so just thank you for all the prep work to get us up to speed.
It really has been a year like no other when it comes to the budget with what Mr. Yubna's had to really tease out, because a lot of those grants, some ended last year, some end this year. There's the question mark if any of them will continue forward. We don't have any indication that that's the case, so it's, you know, it's made it much more challenging to do that. So, he's, I mean, he always does an amazing job anyway, and he is so thorough, as you said, but even more so with all of these moving parts, it's made it, in the last couple of years, much more challenging. It's an understatement.
Yeah, exactly, because you're hitting these moving targets with funding sources, multiple moving targets, I should say. And I also appreciate that Mr. Yubna is not one to ballpark or round things, like, when you get to the answer-
Oh, no, it's to the penny.
It is to the penny, absolutely. Well, if there are no other, or questions or points to bring up with the budget, we'll just consider this our due diligence with this step, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, which I believe is CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, our annual look. Dr. Berdus, you want to take?
Sure. So, you have in front of you the CIP request that shows for this current year, as well as next year and in the future, so that we can kind of get an idea of where we've been and where we're going. Our requests are pretty simple when we think about historically what they've been in the past. So, for next year, we're looking at the computer software printer upgrade replacements. That has not changed. It has been, when we talk about the budget and all those licensing and things, it's really a matter of looking to see some of the lines and where we have them to shift, but that's not changed. It continues to be critically important, particularly in a one-to-one environment as we're looking at any of the upgrades for the devices themselves. The passenger, 77-passenger school bus, like, last year we had on there a couple of mini buses. I mean, it's, it's challenging with the supply chain and even to receive the buses, but I think that that's something that Foxborough does really well. I mean, first of all, just being able to own your own buses and employ your own drivers, there's not many districts that can do that. That is something that is really invaluable, but we need to maintain those. So, continuing each year to have those on the CIP budget is to have those two 77-passenger buses, and as we've had in the past, the information, so you know the amount of miles that are on those, and we're, we're using them a good 10 years, you're looking at the number of miles that are there. So, once we replace them, they are, they are in need of replacement. Copiers, again, really important to be able to maintain those. That's been something, honestly, with the supply chain, that's been very challenging in the buildings, when we had changed the contract with copiers and still waiting on some of those. So, that has been really frustrating, to be honest, with, with faculty and staff and buildings and waiting on those, but that's just a matter of the environment that we're living in right now with supply chain. And then the Taylor School renovation, which I know that's a further agenda item, but not anything there at this point in time because of, as we'll get into, not being invited into the eligibility period at this period, but of time, but to have that placeholder there, because we know that it took us three times with the Burrell. We think, remember, we talked about it's either going to be, you know, third strike and you're out, or third time is the charm, and that's what happened with Burrell, so we'll, we'll see what happens with Taylor, but we know that this particular time period we were not invited in, but we'll talk a little bit more specifically.
Well, and this is, it's early for us, too, right? We were trying to just get, get, get into the queue, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, that's pretty straightforward on the CIP request for a total of 504,000.
And then, are we, this is, if my memory serves, right, ear three of three, correct, of that music package that we had reviewed?
Yes, so thank you for that. So, a reminder on that, that was a large ticket item for when we think about our larger musical instruments, when we think about things like tubas, cellos and replacements, even early on in that first year of the three years, we had the choral risers, if you remember, replaced those, so we're in the third year of that, and being able to replace these instruments, some of them that are 30 years old and just cannot be repaired anymore. So, thank you for that.
Well, and they'd have been doing the repairs and have been doing it, it's just, and then I think you would, you would actually comment in the meeting that you were pleasantly surprised at the life that they were getting out of some of these tubas.
It is, and we need, we need the equipment, and I probably said it then, I might have used some of those things that are 30 years old myself, so it's about time they probably get repaired.
Right. Of note, and this doesn't, this isn't impacted request, it's more just noteworthy, the inflationary changes on the cost for the passenger buses.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's just, you see, you do see-
You've got to plan for it, I saw, I saw that, too.
Yeah, that the bus, the cost of, you know, a bus replacement has gone up considerably, but it's still, we're within the ball, we're below the ballpark of what we've been the last, at least three, four years, in terms of what our requests have been.
Well, and the buses, we should not forget, as a committee, we've talked about this every year, this is the plan, you know, a couple buses a year. When you don't do the two, it sets you back, and we, we've been, we've talked about this over the past two or three years, that, that to stay the course for our fleet is critically important.
Yes, it is.
So, I don't think we've ever deviated, at least in the-
Not in terms of our request, no. There's been years where we held back and then asked it, and then traded, and kind of traded off with the other departments, and, well, this is a nice compliment to have with the bus, with the annual budget, too, so thank you for all the work on that, and thank you to Mr. Yubna, who isn't here tonight, but the work is evident. Any questions on CIP? Will we move forward? Okay. Now, we are on to our second readings of a couple policies that we had started discussing last meeting. First, we'll start with nondiscrimination and harassment.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading. I know we have some questions on that, but I would like to make a motion, when it is appropriate, that we waive the second reading.
A second?
That's fine. We, I'll take that motion now, and we can just, the understanding, of course, being that we'll discuss pertinent changes, and then that will be what we're voting on. Okay. All in favor of waiving the second reading for the nondiscrimination harassment policy? That's 400, so we'll waive the second full reading. Those policies were both read into the record last time. Forgive me. So, now discussing specific changes to that. I don't know if there's anybody from Policy Sub 21 want to take point, or Dr. Berdus, would you like to?
I'm happy to jump in there. So, there were, from my remembrance, we had really two kinds of outstanding questions that needed to be answered, and one of those had to be, had to do with the concern on designated youth groups. And that is based on a federal statute with the Boy Scouts of America. That's where it really comes, comes down to the Boy Scouts of America, and that is the Equal Access Act of, under Title 36, so that designated groups is referring to Title 36. It is something that we are mandated to have in there, the Office of Civil Rights, OCR, it's something that they would look for to have in the policy. Your attorney in asking to put a little bit more, you know, comfortability there, if you will, on having the question that you raised, if you wanted to include, it's under Title 36, because I know the discussion was more so youth groups, exactly who are those youth groups? So, where it says designated, you could say designated under Title 36, if you wanted to be more specific and take out any question marks.
Okay. That is, thank you for chasing that down. Thank you for urging with counsel to do that, and I knew that was a question that Ms. Raymond had had.
Can I ask again, though, the council said we could add that if we, if we wanted to.
Yes, so currently-
Excuse me, he didn't say that that was a must for this edit.
Correct.
He said if we had any different comfort level, we could add it if we chose to.
Yep. It would really just be amending the word designated to designated under Title 36.
I'm okay adding that, if only because there's other elements in here, significant number of where we're referencing a specific statute.
So, it clarifies it, right? So, if you put it to Title 36, it clarifies it is only those groups, right?
Yep, and that's just-
So, if anyone's outside that, it wouldn't be designated youth group?
And if, if it's helpful, I can read the blurb here on the act, so you've, you've got the language behind it, if you, if you'd like me to.
Sure, do you mind?
Okay. So, the act applies to any public elementary school, public secondary school, local educational agency, the LEA, or state educational agency, SCA, that has a designated open forum or limited public forum, and that receives funds made available through the Department of Education Department. Under the act, these entities may not deny equal access or a fair opportunity to meet to or discriminate against any group officially affiliated with the Boy Scouts of America or any other youth group listed in Title 36 of the United States Code as a patriotic society, the Title 36 youth group that wishes to conduct a meeting within the covered entities designated open forum or limited public forum. It really has to do with the Boy Scouts.
That's nice. Thank you very much. That's just personal preference that putting it, putting it in, I don't think harms the policy, I think it just-
Not at all.
Clarifies it more.
I would agree.
I do trust counsel, obviously. It's good. But I think, yeah, if somebody reading it has a question, that's, no, that's just gone. That's my preference, but-
So, can we just revisit the exact words, right? So, I, we can put it wherever you want, I know it's about grammar. Is it going to be designated youth groups under Title 36?
Where you have the word "to all designated youth groups," it would say "to all designated under Title 36 youth groups."
Fine.
That's fine.
Under Title 36 before the word "youth" and after "designated."
Would it be, I'm sorry, would it be better grammar to say, to say "all youth groups as designated under Title 36?
That's what I was wondering.
I think that's better grammar.
I'm fine having it either way, as long as, I do, I do appreciate, I appreciate having the reference in there, but in terms of how it sounds, I defer to your judgment on that, which is always better than mine.
I don't.
So, all designated youth groups under Title 36.
To all youth groups designated under Title 36.
To all youth groups designated under Title 36.
Okay.
But can, shouldn't she read this, aren't they called designated youth groups? Do they use the exact words designated youth groups in what you read to us?
What's our obligation?
It's designated groups under Title 36.
We're just clarifying.
That's what it says, designated groups under Title 36.
Yes.
Because I, so I don't know if taking the designated away from the groups is the right thing. If the law is calling designated youth groups, I know it's word smithing.
No, then, then we should-
But a youth group that's, that's designated under might be-
So, then it should, then it should just say, if that's what it says in the, in the Title 36, it should say the same thing here, then.
That's fair point.
Which is just "to all designated groups under Title 36."
Exactly.
Scratch the word "youth" and just say it that way.
Whatever it says, to keep it, I agree, agreed, agreed. Keep it together, if it's together in the-
It was the word "youth" that was throwing me off.
I got it, I'm with you. Whenever it says there, we want to make it clear.
Good.
All designated groups under Title 36.
I think that's what it is.
Thank you. No, that's good. Great. So, that, thank you for the discussion around that, and thank you again for all the homework. Dr. Berdus?
So, then the second question on this was really just parallel structure, and, and the attorney agreed, said, "Nice job." Nice catch there. So, when you're looking at the second to last paragraph, when it says "have been discriminated against because of their race, color, sex, gender," that's what we were talking about in the first paragraph, the parallel language was not there, so it needs to just read, "have been discriminated against because of race, color, national origin," So it needs to just read, have been discriminated against because of race, color, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, pregnancy or pregnancy status, disability, homelessness, religion, age, or immigration status, and that will make it parallel. Perfect. So it's the same thing that you had above, but just making the language.
Yep. That's tight. Thank you. That's nice, that's a tight policy. Lovely. Now, per pending those two changes, are, do committee members feel that they, if you'd like to vote, we can also, it is fine for us to table till the following meeting. But if you feel that you have enough information to vote?
I don't, yeah, I don't feel like we need to.
Will you address, Michelle showed?
Yes.
Extensive concerns, and I feel that we appropriately addressed them. I don't want to speak for her, but it seems like, it seems like we addressed the concerns, and I feel very comfortable with the language.
All right. In that case, I entertain a motion to move this to a vote.
I'd like to make a motion to approve File AC, the nondiscrimination and harassment policy for the Foxborough Public Schools.
As amended.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of accepting it with revisions we've discussed this evening?
400.
400, so that'll carry?
Yes.
As revised.
As revised.
As revised, per our discussion this evening.
Thank you.
All right. And that'll be updated and placed into the policy manual, which is also the law.
It's just a question of order. Do we now, should we now rescind all the impacted policies? Or do we want to go to the absentee policy first and then go back?
You know what? I think let's wrap this one up. And, I mean, it's more just pro forma, right? But just the newly adopted policy AC is replacing and rescinding.
All other ACs.
All other, yeah, all other file.
Is that not correct?
Yeah, all other prior.
All other file ACs are going to be rescinded.
Yep. ACA, ACAB, ACR, the associated ones.
Will that motion will cover everything?
We should, we should name them in the actual motion and vote.
Just as a reminder, that's just the policies and procedures that are already on the district website.
Yes, exactly. And then for anybody listening, following that, if you didn't catch the prior meeting, everything that's being rescinded is already an adopted policy. And what we just accepted as a revised nondiscrimination harassment policy is an umbrella policy, which covers all these other subpolicies, rather than having each of these subpolicies be.
It's the procedures, the, not the policies, the procedures to follow, and those are noted in that policy AC.
Correct.
And those are on the website, and it states that.
Yes. It's one AC to rule them all.
So I would like to make a motion that with the acceptance of the revised language in policy AC, the nondiscrimination harassment policy, that we vote to rescind File ACA, which is the nondiscrimination on the basis of sex policy, File ACAB, which is the sexual harassment policy, File ACR, which is the policy of Foxborough School District promoting civil rights and prohibiting harassment, bullying, discrimination, and hate crimes.
That's the last one.
Okay.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the last one.
I would second that.
Awesome. All those in favor? 400. Thank you to the work of the committee and admin for streamlining that and bringing it into the modern day.
I may just add, just one last reminder there, the rationale behind that, too, is by having the guidelines, which are all the state, you know, guidelines we have to follow, when the state changes anything, it allows you to be more flexible there, because we're following the state law.
We're never going to get into a situation where we're out of step with what the mandates are from the state legislature. That's good.
We don't have to go through a whole policy process.
Lovely. All right, so then let's move on to Policy JH regarding student absences.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading of File JH, the student absences policy.
A second.
Okay. All in favor of waiving the second reading? 400. We will waive the second reading. And this is the one that, I mean, it was really.
A wordsmith, it was just, we changed, we added, kind of added one word.
I know, right?
Nope. It was brought forward by administration in order to help them actually manage, manage this policy.
A written explanation will help clarify.
Yes.
Absences and help them manage the, not control, I was going to say.
With excuse.
Collection, manage the collection and the word and terminology around absences.
No, and it's more than fair. So expecting a written, a written explanation for an absence as opposed to word of mouth or other things.
Yep.
That's, that's fine. Well, with that.
Can I make a motion to accept File JH, student absence policy for the Foxborough School System?
I'll second it.
Lovely. All in favor of accepting the File JH as amended? Way to go, Mr. Donovan. And thank you, everybody, for the work. These will be updated on the website shortly. This moves us on to MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Authority, Taylor Elementary School Statement of Interest, which is, was mentioned a bit before.
Yes. So as you're aware, we had applied for the statement of interest and had a school visit by the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, in September, where they come out to look at your site that you've submitted the statement of interest for. And that is them to really look to see what schools have the greatest need and urgency.
Right.
And that was part of their visit. And they did see that we had a need, but they only have so much money that they're able to distribute. And so they then vote on, based on those that had the most significant needs. And we were not invited in to the eligibility period this time. As I had stated before, it took three times with the Burrell project. So what that means by not being invited in at this point in time is that we will resubmit the statement of interest going forward, which would then require another vote of support by school committee at a later date. They've just opened that up for the next year, and we have between January and April in order to submit that statement of interest. So we will. So we looked at, you know, we weren't really that surprised, being that it took three times. We also know that we've done an excellent job of maintaining the Taylor School over the years, and there is the need that's there. But based on the list and seeing some of the schools that were invited into the eligibility period of time, it, again, they only have so much money to.
Right. And the schools that were invited in are much.
There, I went and looked because I had to. I just needed, I needed to know and to see how many and where. And we had, there were four high schools, one junior high, and five elementary.
Oh, jeez.
Schools that were invited in. So as an example, like Brockton High School.
Yep.
Was, was one of the schools. As far as an elementary school that's close around us, to us, is in Rinton, the Roderick Elementary School. Other than that, it was like a school in East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, but.
Also overdue.
So again, we'll resubmit our statement of interest, and we'll see what happens the next go around.
Yeah. No, that just, the pool that you're saying, it seems like those are some rather high-need buildings. So we're right on track. Did they give any, and I know that it's not, they don't have to, did they happen to give any feedback on things that we need to add or include, or is it just?
No, they actually said with everything, because our submission, we had everything that was there.
Yep.
And so we'll be able to almost like auto-populate going forward to the next application. And as far as them needing to come back out, chances are, they probably won't need to since they've already visited and they know. They definitely saw that we had needs and had, you know, also said that we've done a good job on what we've done to maintain the building over the years. And we know that Foxborough's got a history of taking care of the facilities, you know, in and around town everywhere. So we'll just hopefully, hope for the next time.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, and I never thought of this question before, so 10 schools approximately, like just quick, based on what you said, right? Entire state, or is it, because the examples you just gave were regional, which was.
So there were 50, 54 submissions, statement of interest.
From the entire state.
From the entire state. And out of that, it was from 46 different districts.
Right.
So you could have had some, you know, multiple schools.
Right.
In the same district. So we were, we were one of 46 districts that submitted, one of 54 applications.
That just seems, that seems loaded me.
Well, the other, the other piece you have to keep in mind is the cost of construction and square footage has changed dramatically. So the amount of money that the MSBA has and even the matching grants is not going to go as far as an example when we did the Burrell. I mean, you know, Mr. Yugna can speak to this much more specifically than I can, but it's a whole different ballgame at this point in time when you think about the square footage costs for building, and the money's not going to stretch as far.
Right. My point is, I think, when you think about the entire state and the number of school facilities in the entire state, say that only 56 submissions or 53 submissions out of 46 districts, that's a pretty low number to me of.
But you have to have matching, so keep that in mind.
It's, I think.
You've got to have the town, that's the reason.
That's the piece that I wasn't connecting, so thank you.
That's the reason we have to have, and that was something that changed in 2022, I believe, is having the vote to support from your board.
Right.
That says, we're supporting this because it's a matching grant. You've got to have the town on board to be able to fund it.
So that's the piece that I was, that's what I wasn't connecting, so thank you.
Yes.
Well, the amount of ducks you have to have in a row to get to the point of even submitting is high.
You need town financial, not just to get in for the opportunity, the opportunity goes beyond that. It goes to financial access and the town.
That's the piece that wasn't.
Yeah. It's a good question, though, because you're right. In the overall, you think that number is very low until, as you were saying, and I'm like, oh, and then I was like, okay.
Right.
Makes sense.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah, it's good.
Appreciate that.
And also, just a thank you to Bill and Dr. Berdus for staying on top of this. It's easy to come out of the building project for the Burrell and kind of pull back and stop for a while and pause, which we do, we did, but we knew that the Taylor was necessary. So I think it's important, the takeaway is that we, as a committee and with administrative leadership, understand the need of our school buildings in our community, and we can't forget, you know, one school because we just finished one project, right? So we'll stay on top of this, and it keeps us in our sights, so I think that's a good thing.
Thank you. And then within that January to April of this now current calendar year window, when that goes in again, we would just bring it back as an agenda item, correct?
So by April 14th, we have to submit it. So before that, at a school committee meeting, we'll be coming forward and asking for your vote of support again.
Thank you very much. Well, moving ahead, folks, acceptance of a donation from the Meditech, Inc.
So this is a donation that we've had annually.
Yeah.
And it's a very generous donation. It's $15,000. And that is to be designated for, in the area of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. So it originally started with a $10,000 donation, and it's increased to 15,000 in the last couple of years, which, again, very generous. We have used that in the past for things such as vernier probes.
Yep.
Expanding Project Lead the Way. So we also, each year, we present back to their board of how we've spent the money and the impact that it has had for our students and for our staff in the schools. So it's always, it's a fun time to be able to showcase what our kids are doing and what our teachers are able to do with our students based on that funding. So asking for you to accept the donation with gratitude, of course, from Meditech.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. And especially for those, in those areas, there's so many pieces of technology which can really, really enhance learning, but they're never number one on like a curriculum director's priority list, because there's other things. But it really allows you to expand the options. So that's very generous.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept with gratitude the donation of $15,000 from Meditech.
I'd like to second.
Thank you both very much. All those in favor? 400 for accepting the $15,000 donation with very much gratitude from Meditech.
Huge thank you, huge thank you, year after year.
And I know Dr. Burrows, where she's leading the science curriculum review, this is a great year, too.
Yes.
As far as to be thinking about where those dollars may go.
I promise we will put it to good use between the science curriculum review and the technology education curriculum review. There's lots of opportunities to increase access to STEM, whether that be through purchasing some high-tech materials or expanding Project Lead the Way. We're, we're right in the midst of those conversations and talking about what our next steps are in expanding STEM.
Nice. Thank you. Moving on to other matters, Ms. Ladani, do you have anything?
We're pretty quiet on the Parks and Rec front. We had a wonderful vacation camp that was largely staffed by our new partnership with Community Warriors Club. So they were the bulk of the volunteers to help that camp run well, and it was great. Great feedback. And Tais and Tiaras are on the horizon, the big Tais and Tiaras dance is coming up. Date is still TBD, but we'll let you know. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Campfield, do you have?
Just a personal word to, as going back to what you had said earlier about the, for seniors and guidance, for parents and students that don't know this, I highly encourage you to take advantage of any of the recommendations from the guidance office for scholarships. Just my personal situation, my son was able to take advantage of a lot of things where he was one of like two or three applicants.
Really?
So, and the applicant, so just, they're out there, the guidance office has the information, they can help you take advantage of it, because there's, there's money just sitting there for people, so.
That's great. Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Nothing.
Dr. Berdus?
Okay.
Dr. Burrows?
Nothing else.
Okay. And I have nothing else. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Really?
Wow, I'd like to second that one at 47 minutes.
So, let's, let's, let's put that momentarily, see if we can get to 50.
Slows this down every time.
Yeah, I know. Phil's not here.
So, all in favor of adjournment?
All right.
400, we stand on adjournment. Thank you, everybody.